Good evening, everyone. I welcome you to the Beaverton School Board work session on November 16th. We're glad that you're all with us this evening. Tonight will be an evening that we come together to listen, learn, and discuss. We hope to identify places where we need to adjust, places where we need to identify that we have things that we need to come together as a community, and that's where tonight is so important is we have community voice. And we'll be learning about our partnership that we have with on school resource officers with the city of Beaverton, with the city of Hillsborough, and with the Washington County. We ask that board members, if you have questions that you once our presenters, you can put your questions in chat or just say that you would like to ask the question of our of our presenters. So with that, I'm going to introduce our superintendent, Don Grodding, to introduce our first presenters.
All right. Thank you, Chair Chuck. My name is Don Grodding, Superintendent Beaverton School District. And it's my privilege to introduce from Echo Northwest, Joel Ainsworth and Andrew Dyke. When we began gathering information about our SROs and their work in school, we wanted to go out through a third party provider. Neco Northwest is renowned for the work that they do, not only in Oregon, but throughout the Northwest, partnering with various education agencies. So at this time, it's my pleasure to turn it over to I don't know who first, Joel or Andrew. Welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Joel Ainsworth, since his regrets, he wasn't able to make the presentation. So it will just be me. And so I believe I need to share my screen. Is that something I can do? Just share my screen. Will that work or?
Yes. I believe Mr. Williams is helping us out there. Is that working, Andrew, or not?
No, it looks like I need to, I can restart and maybe it will work then. Otherwise, I'm happy to just sort of talk through if someone else can show the slides. That's that's fine.
That'd be, that'd be fine, Andrew. Can you send those to me real quick?
Yep.
David Williams.
Otherwise, Andrew, we can make you a host again and see if it'll work.
Yeah, happy to. Well, I think what I need to restart Zoom just and then should work. Not sure I should leave the meeting, though. Let me, let me send these to David.
Okay. What disappeared and said that you were the host, Andrew, on my screen anyway. So hopefully it'll work.
Well, I'll give it one more shot here. Oh, well, maybe it does. Okay, set that up on the screen. Excellent. Okay. Apologies here. Just okay, yeah. So what I'm going to do with these slides is to sort of walk through a summary of our findings based on the the community survey that the school district deployed over the summer. Want to give you some insights or our insights into the the general perspective that respondents had on SROs and the presence of SROs in particular in schools within the district and also highlight some of the common themes and having to take questions as we're moving along and also at the end. So just a quick overview of what the survey was and the questions we were asked to address. The district distributed an online survey to capture experiences of students, staff, community members, parents with school resource officers. This survey was administered in late July to very early August, and there were almost getting close to 2,500 respondents from again, students, parents and teachers that responded to the survey. And this was a fairly short survey, which is generally a good thing in survey work. There were two questions. The first question was, have you or your students had any personal experiences, positive or negative, with school resource officers on the campus of a Beaverton school? These were free response questions. The second question, what would you like our school board to know or what questions do you have about school resource officers? So I'm based on both of these were open ended questions. People had a lot to say. Based on the responses, we were asked to review the responses and answer two specific questions. One, were most personal experiences with SROs positive or negative? And that ties very directly to that first survey question there. The second question we were asked to address was, do most respondents agree or disagree that SROs should be in schools? And that question presented a little bit more of a challenge in that it was not explicitly asked in the survey. People had a lot to say, and in many cases, it was pretty clear whether they would support or oppose. But there was a certain amount of ambiguity in the responses as well, because the survey did not ask that that simple sort of agree or disagree question, and we'll, we'll talk more about that as we, as we move along. So what do we do? Our analysis consisted of two components. We wanted to provide the most value and best understanding of the survey responses, given the resources we had for the project. The first component was a computer based sentiment analysis of all of the responses. And this kind of sort of mechanical scoring of responses where the computer has an algorithm that looks at the words that individuals use and their answers and assigns them a score, either positive or negative, that should reflect the intensity of the emotion or opinion embodied. And then we look at all the words in a response and come up with an overall score for each response. And this, this analysis allows us to answer questions such as, will respondents generally positive about SROs or not? And there's fairly good evidence that that we can answer that with with high degree of confidence. In addition to that, the sentiment analysis is a mechanical exercise. It's not perfect. It has many limitations. So we wanted to supplement that with a manual detailed review of a number of responses. For this project, we could not do a detailed review of all of the two plus thousand responses. But what we did do was take a random 20% sample, four to 500 responses in total and reviews those in detail to try to understand the the common themes in people's in people's responses. And in addition to that 20% sample, we did review all 30 plus responses from people who answered the survey in a language other than English to make sure we captured their perspectives. And it will pause. I think as host, I'm getting a notification on whether to admit somebody or not. Is that something I should be? Okay, one way.
No, Andrew, we'll take care of that side. Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we're not missing anything. So what this review does again helps us to sort of confirm the sentiment analysis and again, draw out those themes in terms of the the top concerns or positive aspects of the program that people are highlighting in their responses. So I will say, all the findings in the slides after this reflect the survey responses. We did also review the public comment that was submitted in the June school board meeting. And I'll say this a couple of times, but the tenor of the survey responses was somewhat different from the tone of responses in the public comment. And so I would just suggest that you take the survey responses as one input to your decision making process. It has flaws like like all other methods. And sort of take it, take it with a grain of salt, but we do, we do think there's some important insights here. So our key findings, relatively large majorities of all respondents appeared to have positive opinions about the SROs. Most of the experiences were reported as positive. And although not specifically asked in the survey, pretty good evident, we find very strong evidence that most respondents to the survey favor retaining the SRO program in the Beaverton School District. Some of the most common commonly cited positive opinion for like the school safety and appropriate environment that supported discipline, anti bullying efforts, and so on. We'll go into a little bit more detail in a few slides. There are also a lot of negative views of SROs. These were a minority of all respondents. But in many cases, the the responses were, I think, on the one hand, more varied than the positive sort of responses and also qualitatively, in many senses, more intense in terms of the strength of opinion or emotion reported and a lot of specific concerns about the negative impact of the SRO program on Black Indigenous and other students of color and some of the consequences there. Respondents also had a number of questions about the program and suggestions, for example, for improving screening and training along with providing either in addition to or instead of SROs, a wider array of reference services, more counselors, et cetera, as part of a more comprehensive student support environment. And we'll get into all that in a little more detail. So but first want to step back to that first high level sentiment analysis where we looked at all of the responses and again, ran the responses through a mechanical scoring algorithm to look at the question of whether experiences with SROs were positive or negative. And some people didn't report, they said they did not have any experience at all, but that's not what we're looking at here. We're looking at the experiences people had. And we do find that based on that that approach that more than three quarters of respondents did, in fact, report having had a positive experience with the SROs. And the remainder, a more negative response. And the chart shows you sort of the distribution of the responses where on the left, increasingly negative responses were smaller and smaller shares, positive responses on the right. I would characterize most responses as relatively positive, and the specific numbers behind that don't have a lot of meaning, but you kind of look at the shape of the distribution of responses. Second question. We looked at a sentiment analysis. This was not addressing directly the question of whether the school board should keep SROs, but whether the response to that second question, which is, what else should the school board know whether those responses were positive or negative? And again, overall, by and large, we found that those responses were positive, nearly three quarters of responses were identified as as positive responses. So that's good. That's in terms of the survey responses. That suggests overall positive statements, positive opinions, positive ideas about the SRR program. There are counterfeeling negative opinions, but by and large, majority seemed to appreciate the experiences and so on. So we want to pull that apart with our manual review, but before we do that, give you a sense of what's behind that sentiment analysis. And what we're looking at here is the most commonly used words on the right, positive words in people's responses. And on the left, the most commonly used negative words. The larger fonts reflect more commonly used words. And this is a useful kind of exercise for understanding the general themes present in the responses. It's worth pointing out that this kind of analysis is not definitive. It's not a human reading and understanding responses. For example, someone might use prevents violence in their response, preventing violence is presumably a good thing, whereas the violence is a negative word. So we don't take that sentiment analysis by itself. We have to look further at the detailed review. But I think this, this, these word clouds give you a good sense of the kinds of things that people are concerned about and talking about in their responses. Okay, so again, we conducted the sentiment analysis and we also conducted a detailed manual review where we actually had humans looking at the, looking at the data of 20% of the responses. And the next few slides show you results from from that that analysis. So first question was about whether people had responses or not. As I mentioned, this is no surprise. Not everybody has had an experience with an SRO, but a majority, 64% of this sample of respondents did report having had some experience with the SRO. I will say that for a handful of those, it was relatively minimal. There were some respondents that said, yeah, I saw the SRO walking down the hall. Most of these are more substantive experiences than that, the vast majority. Another 23% had no experience and another 13% of these respondents, either they didn't respond or it wasn't clear from the text what what they
Andrew, this is
whether they've had any experience or not. Yes.
Is it, are you comfortable in taking questions now? Would you like to wait until the end of your
Absolutely. And I apologize if I'm missing something in the chat, but
I was gonna wait until the end. I just wanted to make sure I was in the queue, Becky.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Andrew.
So no question at this point. Yeah, okay, great. Yeah. So this gives us the the distribution, a majority of students or respondents, sorry. We don't know necessarily if respondents are students, staff, or parents or others, but a majority of respondents had some experience or their student or child had had some experience with SROs. Getting to the the second question that we were asked, which was, to what extent do people agree that SROs should remain in the school? Based on this manual review, we find that almost three quarters of respondents, 72% do think SROs should be in schools and a couple of points on that. One, this did involve some judgment. Again, the survey was not set up as a checkbox or a strongly agree, strongly disagree, et cetera. We had to use use our judgment really to classify people as agreeing or not. In some cases, it's very clear. In others, it's more ambiguous. And in the final category, sort of neutral, no response, not clear. It's just too hard to say based on our judgment. But overall, big picture, nearly three quarters of respondents believe that SROs should remain in the school. And this has, if if the survey is representative of the community we're interested in, this would have a statistical margin of error of plus or minus five percentage points. And I will say that again, because it's important, if the survey respondents represent the community we're interested in, we can have high confidence that the share that say that SROs remain in school is 72% plus or minus five percentage points. So if we put those two questions together, I think there's a natural question about does experience with an SROs tend to increase or decrease support for the program? And what we're finding based on the survey data is that experience, if anything, seems to predispose people to support the SROs. Amongst the the people who reported having some experience with SROs, 80% of those agreed that SROs should remain in schools. For those with no experience or response was not clear, the proportion agreeing was much lower, although still a majority. But but a much larger share of people with an experience, SRO experience did in fact report agreeing that SROs should remain in school. Okay, as I mentioned, we also reviewed all of the the responses from non English survey takers. Most of these were Hispanic. There was a handful of Chinese, Vietnamese and Russian survey responses as well. If we look at the agreement that SROs should be in school amongst this subpopulation, we find that 64% a little bit less than two thirds of respondents think that SROs should be in school and only two reported explicit disagreement with that statement. So a smaller share than for the population overall, I think, again, this is a much smaller sample. And we can have reasonably high confidence that if this is reflect, these opinions are reflective of students whose families are not native English speakers that at least a plurality of those of that population would support keeping SROs in schools, if not a majority, although in this survey, the answer was was a majority. Couple of themes will lead into the theme we drew out of the full set of responses on the negative side. There was a comment that there's little interaction with between SROs and students. They're not very friendly, and that creates fear. That does tie into some themes we saw generally across all respondents. On the positive side, again, this was cited by by more than one of this this group. I feel much more secure to send my child to school, knowing our schools are supported by local police and each school is under their watch during operation hours. Again, that was a common sentiment we found in the the broader set of respondents as well. So last set of details here on the survey responses, again, based on our manual review, informed by the the sentiment analysis that pulled out the most important positive and negative words. We did identify a number of common themes that were cited by multiple respondents, both the positive and the negative experience. And as we've said, by number, we saw many more positive reports. Amongst the negative experiences, we did see qualitatively that they tended to be a little more varied. You see one more theme on the negative side. And that qualitatively, in many cases, the response was was more intense in terms of the strength of the opinion as we read them. And I will say that we have some pull quotes for all these themes in the appendix to these slides that we can go into those if you want, but I left them in the appendix in case that's that's too much detail for the moment. But just sort of run down these, the positive side, positive experiences with SROs. Many, a number of respondents said that they were useful and important for anti bullying efforts, either to investigate incidents of bullying or to help promote anti bullying programs across within schools and across schools, similarly helpful for reducing drug use or anti drug efforts in the schools. SROs could serve as a role model to students, a positive role model. Some respondents said that they were SROs were vital to school safety. That they can be helpful for sharing responsibilities and may be able to take on tasks more effectively than other school staff members. We have one, a quote from one respondent in the appendix about how useful it was to have the SRO able to find a student who had left campus when they should not have, and that maybe that was easier because because there was an SRO around. And then finally, the last common theme we found many noted the the opportunity for positive interaction with law enforcement in what should be a relatively safe environment. On the negative side, commonly cited themes, concern about discrimination towards minority students. The fact that many students are fearful of law enforcement officers, and so the presence of an SRO can induce fear. Some people questioned the effectiveness of the SRO towards achieving their goals. There's some concern about the presence of armed SROs on the schools and the presence of additional guns. Similar related to the first point, concern about the lack of diversity in SROs and a lack or questioning of the screening process and the training that SROs went through. And then finally, the perception by some that SROs maybe overstepped their stated and prescribed roles in some cases. So just sort of to wrap up what we found, again, overall, we found that most respondents prefer to have SROs in the schools, although there were a number of pointed concerns about the negative impact particularly on on BIPOC students. There were a number of questions. Again, there's in the appendix, there's a little more detail, questions from the community suggesting the need maybe for more communication about how much money is spent on the SROs, the specific roles of SROs, the kinds of screening and training that SROs receive. In particular, to screening and training, I'd say sometimes that was tied to sort of negative sentiments where they cited the lack of training. In other cases, it was just a general information. You know, what kind of training do they receive? You know, how do we know that they're they're supposed to be in the in the schools? And then questions about whether the funds could be better spent on other programs, again, getting at questions of effectiveness. And that relates, I think, directly to the suggestions people had. I I won't say most common, but a very common sentiment was that the school board should listen carefully, engage with and listen carefully to BIPOC communities and enact their recommendations if SROs are remaining in the schools, increase the diversity of SROs. Many suggestions for creating a hybrid model that incorporates a wider way of support services to better support students across a number of different domains. And then finally, I think, very germane to this, this survey, there were a number of respondents that suggested that to ensure and help support sort of understanding the representativeness of respondents asked explicitly about factors that are very relevant to this particular discussion, such as respondents' race, ethnicity, gender, sexuality, and language in surveys of this type. And so that wraps up our findings. Again, there's a little more detail in the appendix, but beyond that, happy to take whatever questions you have.
Thank you very much, Andrew. We appreciate Echo Northwest helping us out for that. Just for our folks that are just joining us. This survey was not a scientific survey. We put it out to our community as a whole and and got the responses. And then Echo Northwest just helped by doing what they just did, putting together themes. We have all of the raw data that we will be visiting and looking at, because there's a lot of information in there, but just so that our community could see kind of a thumbnail through the 2,500 different responses that we had. And then also that this is a gathering of information and a process that we're going to be working through. The board is going to take in this information and continue to work with our superintendent to move forward in in the process. But at the end of this evening, it is, it is not going to be a goal that we are taking a up or down vote on the future. It is what we do as next steps. So with that, this is a gathering of information and finding out and getting questions answered by board members. And I believe, Donna, you wanted to start off first with asking some questions.
Sorry about that, guys. I got bumped off of my internet, but I'm back. Anyway, um, I want to thank you, Andrew, for the thorough report. But I am really concerned about the fact that I'm not really sure if this is really a representation of our community. Because there was no, there's no information about which schools there these parents, students attend. I do know, for example, like schools like Stoller and Conestoga and Whitford, for example. They don't have SROs assigned to their campuses. So not that I'm going to discount those parents' opinions, but they really probably wouldn't have the same experience as a Mountain View or Five Oaks or any of the other middle schools. I know all the high schools have have them. So can you explain to me why we did at least ask the parents what schools their kids went to? Because to me, that would be more reflective of community's views on this matter.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I will say, as you noted, there there really is no way to quantify the representedness of respondents. We were not involved in the survey design, so I can't speak to why questions were included or not included in the survey.
So who put, I mean, I'm not sure this whole, how did the process happen? Who developed the questions? I mean, I guess you're giving the presentation, so I guess I automatically assumed you were involved, start to finish. So could you explain how all that happened? Because you're making the presentation, so I'm assuming this is all your work.
Right. Yeah. Well, so the the presentations and the analysis of the data we had is all of our work. We were not involved in survey development or deployment. We were brought in after the survey had closed and asked, I think, as as part of this information gathering process to again, look at the data, see what kind of themes we can pull out from the survey responses and provide that to the school board.
Well, maybe, maybe staff can address that issue.
It would, what I'm going to do, Donna, is that when we talked about this yesterday, is this was when our community wanted to have some input back in June, we were looking to see what we could as as quickly as possible, get out to our community to gather some some information, knowing that this was going to be a beginning of a conversation. So this was something that Tom and I as board leadership worked on to get some open ended questions together. And we worked with the communication staff on putting that survey then together and how it was sent out to the community and then gathering those responses. I know Tom and I worked very closely with communication staff and Tom, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, definitely. So I think the thinking behind the questions when we were compiling them was we wanted to keep them open ended to allow people to provide a variety of responses. We didn't want to kind of preclude people being able to respond with their personal feelings or thoughts in any way about the SRO program. And then we wanted to make sure that for members of the community who might not be comfortable giving personal information and might want to have anonymity that we weren't asking those questions so that we would be able to garner a variety of responses and we wouldn't have it other people feeling like, hey, I can't respond to this survey because I don't, I feel like it would expose me in any way to, you know, being personally named. I take your point, though, Donna, in terms of what we can garner from the survey data now that we're looking at it. But the idea was a starting point to allow our community to respond broadly and in the ways that that they felt was most applicable.
So I guess I still don't feel like this is reflective of the community, because I'm not exactly sure which community is responding. So I just kind of, I guess I'm discounting this whole survey because of that. That's just my opinion.
Susan.
I do think Anne was next, but
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Anne. Anne, thank you, Susan.
I guess I just had a question along the same line as Donna. Is there any demographic information that we can get split out based on the respondents, you know, whether it was students who replied or teachers or parents or demographic information about background, you know, I saw the English language, but that seemed to be the only thing we could find out. Is that true?
Yeah, that's all we had. I mean, there's, within the responses, for some of them, you could, you could sort of divide whether it's a parent or a teacher or a student. Yeah, that's all we had. I mean, there's, within the responses, for some of them, you could, you could sort of divide whether it's a parent or a teacher or a student. But in many cases, you can't. So that, that language, this is about all we have.
Andy, do you have a follow-up question or?
No, no, I just, I, I'm disappointed, but that's, I don't have any other questions.
Susan?
My, my questions are going to follow along the same line as Donna and Anne's. I'm wondering why we didn't have a follow-up, you know, as we have with other surveys out there with our differing communities. Because, I mean, we are especially concerned about our BIPOC population. And so I feel like that's a big piece of what's missing from the survey. Especially because we don't really, I mean, because those questions weren't asked in the survey. We, we're, we don't know who, who's answering, you know, and so it's, it, this, it feels. I don't know if it's skewed or not, but it feels skewed because we don't have demographic information. And also, like, I would also clarify that I would have expected that we would have done some follow-up surveys to communities of color.
And there's nothing that stops that from, from continuing. This was something we gathered in June and we were getting that we were not, we were, we had not done anything with that information. So this was the first step. Obviously, we made, you know, we're not experts in putting together surveys and we could have done a better job. And it's something moving forward before we can certainly get more specific information. And that's why we were waiting until the school year that we thought we could do more outreach with our students. And, and that's something that Pat, I think, is going to address a little bit later, but point, point well taken from, from the board. Any other informations for, questions from Eco Northwest?
Becky, I do have another question. I was wondering, I, I mean, we know that there were over 2,000 respondents, but I was wondering how many, I mean, I understand it was a smaller representation, but how many people responded to the non-English survey?
That was, it was, I think my first slide said about 30. It's actually 39, so. It's not, not a large share of the respondents.
So they, even the information that was gleaned from the non-English doesn't really, is not very telling because there weren't, weren't that many respondents from the non-English respondents.
Well, and you know, we were not asked, there's not a lot in terms of data to address representativeness. We were not asked to address that. That the responses are what they are. And I think as, as part of an information gathering process, this could be a starting point. I, I think that the general themes that we pulled out are not that different from what you would pull out for the most part from the, the public commentary. Although the sort of positive, negative ratio is a little bit somewhat different. But I think that provides avenues for exploring as well as obviously intentionally reaching out to communities that you do want respected, reflected in this information gathering process.
All right. Well, if there are any more questions, Andrew, we appreciate you joining us tonight. And again, this will be one of the many steps in a process of still gathering information, but we appreciate you at least giving us a big picture and we'll try to zoom in on more specific information and getting more current and accurate data as we look at the process up closer. So thank you very much for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next up, we are going to hear from Deputy Superintendent Dr. Carl Meade. And he's going to introduce us to our, our next, our next guest.
Excellent. If I can go ahead and have our law enforcement partners join me on screen, that would be great. All right. I will go ahead and start with introductions. I know we've got, I believe, one or two still possibly going to join us.
Carl, I just admitted two people.
Perfect. All right, then we should.
You might, you might call out to join you on screen again.
Yes. Pat, go ahead and join us on screen if you've joined us. There he is. Excellent. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, and good evening, board. Nice to see everyone this evening. I just wanted to take a moment to, this give you a brief overview of this portion of the agenda. First off, I want to start with introductions. It's a pleasure for me to introduce Chief Rhonda Groschong from the Beaverton Police Department. There's Rhonda. With the Beaverton Police Department. And from Washington County Sheriff's Office, we have Sheriff Pat Garrett. We also have Sergeant Chad Martin. And from the Hillsborough Police Department, we have Lieutenant Ron Richards. Right there. And we also have Sergeant Gilbert, Leland Gilbert, sorry. And I believe you're sitting in your car. Is that correct? All right, there you go.
The only private space I have.
Okay. And in addition to that, all of you are familiar with Rick Puente. He's our Director of Public Safety. He's also here this evening. So we will begin very briefly here in just a moment with Chief Groschong and Sheriff Garrett with just brief comments from each of them. We will then transition to Rick Puente to be able to give some background because there are some questions from the board about the role of our campus supervisors, what their duties and responsibilities are in the schools. So Rick will give us an overview of that. And then we will have Kevin, Kevin McDonald, as well as Chad Martin. And I believe also our Hillsborough partners to join in and to give the overview of the role of the SRO. What their duties and responsibilities are as well. So and feel free as questions come up through their presentations, feel free to ask. I know it's hard to hold off until the end. It's easier to have context in the, in the portion in which the presentation is happening. So with that, Chief Groschong.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck and the members of the Beaverton School Board. Thank you for having us here tonight. I mean, I served as the police chief for the city and I was hired in 1995. At that time, we, our, our, the school resource officer program was different. It was there. But one thing has remained constant over the years and it's our strong partnership, the police department's strong partnership with the Beaverton School District. It's one we value and we will continue to value and, and work on and, and remain have that strong relationship. Whatever the school board's decision is, we will respect that decision and we will continue on with our support of the Beaverton School District. And work together to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Sheriff Garrett?
Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck and School Board members. I want to express my sincere gratitude for your inviting us to be part of this conversation tonight. And at least allow us to express, you know, what we believe are the value of the school resource officer program. Well, we're also grateful for your ongoing partnership with the Beaverton Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, public safety, fully across, across the, the spectrum. Really, the role of an SRO is an extension of our dedication to community service. And there are some specific scenarios where they really play a valuable role in keeping our, our youth safe and our, and our schools safe, our communities safe. Domestic violence is just one example. It severely affects our youth both as witnesses and survivors. The relationships that SROs built with, with, with students. Often those, those challenges, those really unfortunate circumstances get reported to an SRO and they end up investigating some of those unfortunate circumstances. Runaways are also an unfortunate factor in some of our schools and having direct communication and connection with SROs. They, they oversee a lot of these cases as well. And then finally, in partnership with district staff, connecting students in crisis to behavioral health services is also something that an SRO finds themselves doing as well. Last fall, I had the opportunity to spend a day at two separate high schools with our SROs just to kind of re-familiarize myself with their daily functions. And I was captivated by the, the familiarity, the relationships that our SROs built over with, with the students across a wide array of, of diversity in age and, and background. And them having the kind of conversations, whether it's mentorship, advice, or just talking to them about their day at their school, in their community. It really helped reinforce the, the fact that there are some, there are some long-term relationships built over time which, which make that program valuable for some significant number of students. I recognize, we recognize that opinions about this program vary. And that reasonable people have different opinions and that's absolutely appreciated. And I've listened to the comments earlier in this evening and the concern rightfully placed about BIPOC students. I just want you to know, as Chief Groschong said, we are here to support the district. And we're flexible, we're open-minded to doing our job differently than we do it today. It has evolved over time. And I just want to thank you for your service and your priority to education and to safety in, in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff Garrett. Board, before I hand this over to Rick to give you an overview of campus supervisors, I just wanted to reference the document that was provided to you last week. As the SRO report, that was a document that was prepared, inter-agency collaboration on that in terms of being able to provide background. Certainly an opportunity for springboard for questions for you that you may have along with their presentations this evening. So Rick, if you'll go ahead and take a few minutes to give a review.
All right. Good evening, Beaverton School Board Chair, Tim Chuck and School Board members and other guests. As mentioned, I'm Rick. I'm the Rick Puente, Director of Public Safety. Today, we'll be discussing the status of our Beaverton School District and its working partnerships with our local law enforcement agencies. And, and that are represented here tonight. Our law enforcement representatives will discuss the roles of the SRO and how they partner with our district. But my role tonight is to just give you a general overview of our campus supervisors and their functions within our school district today. So we have always recognized police, fire, and medical as our first responders. About a year and a half ago, when I was meeting and training with our campus supervisors, the term of immediate responder came up and it was used by our campus supervisors because they are onsite at our schools. Well, and they were during that time and addressing crisis situations, emergency situations, assisting our school administrators with some of the challenges they had. So we started to take a look at what that, those opportunities meant for being an immediate responder on campus. So currently, right now, our Beaverton School District right now oversees our public safety department, oversees 25 campus supervisors that are primarily assigned to the high school and some middle schools. I believe that there's three middle schools that do not have campus supervisors at this time. All our campus supervisors are state certified through the Department of Public Safety and Standards. And it is every two years, they must renew their certification. As a matter of fact, about three weeks ago, I just recertified 10 of our campus supervisors to maintain that certification. As of about almost a year ago, I worked with HR to adjust our certifications with our campus supervisors so that they all are first aid, CPR, and AED certified and trained. And of course, all our campus supervisors are trained through safety care, which is part of our district training regarding restraint and seclusion. Their primary function on our campuses is to provide safety and security presence in and around our campuses. They also, they are to serve as a visible presence to our students, staff, and community. Campus supervisors are a tool that we use to demonstrate through the district our reasonable efforts and due diligence to our community that we are working to ensure the safety of all our students. Our campus supervisors are usually mobile throughout the day, interacting with students and staff and our community as they come and go from our school district properties. Campus supervisors are also called to assist us school administrators with behavioral issues, student flow, supervision, and administrative support. In their everyday roles, campus supervisors have the opportunity to build some really strong relationships with students throughout the days and they continue to develop that professionalism through training and interaction with our local law enforcement partners and SROs. And of course, our continued professional development through the district level. The role of the campus supervisors is constantly just focused to assist with the safety and security of our schools. Unfortunately, recently with COVID and has changed some of the dynamics in the deployment of how we're using our campus supervisors. Unfortunately, COVID has created some issues where now we have seen an uptick in some vandalism and criminal activities. So we've redeployed our campus supervisors to assist more with the safety and security of our schools and buildings, which they continue to do. Our campus supervisors also serve right now as a resource for our SROs. Unfortunately, child abuse continues to be a factor. We recently had a medical issue at one of our high schools where a student was lifelighted, where a campus supervisor played an important role in, in that and sharing information. So they still serve a huge, huge critical role in the partnerships between our school resource officers and our school administration. We, I know currently where we sit at 25 is still down from back in, I believe it was 2008 where there was a reduction. But we're still able to meet the basic needs of our district to ensure that we are keeping our students in the district and staff safe. We have worked continually to ensure that they are up to certification standards and that we are providing the best customer service. I believe that that was one of the key words that we looked at a few years ago from our superintendent is how do we provide the best customer service in safety and security? And they're really working on that. Lastly, overall, whether it's a campus supervisor, school resource officer, school administrator, or district staff. I believe that we're all responsible for the safety and security of our 40,000 students. And in these trying and challenging times, I believe that no one's an exception to, to the challenges that we're facing. I was looking at one of the books that we were reading as a district called Dare to Lead by Brene Brown. And one of her statements was, "We don't derive strength from rugged individualism, but rather from our collective ability to plan, communicate, and work together." And that, to me, describes our campus supervisors as they plan and collaborate with our administrators and our school resource officers. It has been a great partnership and I just look forward to continuing to work with our school board and school district as we continue to plan and move forward. So I thank you very, very much for this brief opportunity. And I will turn it over to Carl or our next law enforcement guest.
You're muted, Carl.
Don loves to be able to mute me. So we have a couple of questions from board members. Susan, I believe you're up first.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. So I have question. I assume that we have supervisors at the three middle schools that don't necessarily have SROs at them. So that all of our schools in the middle school and high school, no, Donna's saying no. So can, so can you clarify that?
So are you, Susan, are you asking what, what middle schools do not have campus supervisors? Is that what I answered?
I guess that's the question. I'm, I was one question.
So right now it is Stoller and Whitford and see all, all.
Conestoga. I was going to ask why we don't have any kind of safety or security person at any of those middle schools. Because that is concerning to me.
We don't, and I can answer that, Susan, as I was president of the district when we were going through those budget cuts back in 2008. We had to cut those positions and those positions have been, I'll be honest, they've been denied since then as requests have come forward almost every year to increase our campus supervisors.
Okay, I'm, okay, so I'll get over this being stunned by that and move on to my next question, which is as we're planning ahead and hopefully looking at, you know, the whole picture. And, you know, we have social workers at a lot of our secondary schools. If we are, have a plan or working on a plan for social workers to be working with our school supervisors and SROs more. And if there isn't, will there be?
We don't have anybody from teaching and learning to speak to that at this point in time, but I would say absolutely the answer is yes. And that's part of the reason why Danielle's position was created, Danielle Hudson. Her position to be able to work in partnership with those multiple groups. As we're taking a look at student safety and just general welfare across the district. So the answer is long-term, yes.
Susan, what I can tell you, and many of our schools too, are not only our campus supervisors, but also sometimes our SROs are on care welfare teams to where sometimes our administrators may not know something that's going on with the family, but our SROs will know what's happening and they're actually able to go in and assist some of our administrators with knowing that, hey, this family is possibly having a rough time out there. This is happening, this is happening, that otherwise we would not know outside the school environment. And they're able to assist us in some of that information. I know some of them are using, using some of them on some attendance, attendance team issues, doing welfare checks, reports of child abuse, all of those type of things within and outside of the school.
And I would also add Susan, that I know that currently in the law enforcement communities, they have partnered up. And I believe Sheriff Garrett and Chief Groucho would also be able to speak to this. But a lot of law enforcement agencies have partnered with mental health professionals to provide some of those services. And, and what we are looking at in the district with added social workers are SROs. As I mentioned, it is definitely a collaborative effort. I believe that's the same kind of format or structure or program that would be used in that, in that setting for our schools to address some of the mental health issues, some of the emotional issues that our students face. So it is definitely something I see really mirroring a lot what's already happening in our community. There's a saying that the police is the community and the community is the police. And it really correlates together. And I see us as a district really supporting each other to address the needs of our students, so.
So hi, this is Danielle Hudson. I can go ahead and speak up a little bit about this. So at this time, it's been really through our behavioral health and wellness teams, you know, we're working to kind of get those off the ground. But particularly at our high schools and our middle schools, what we've been doing is including in those team conversations, our campus monitors, our campus supervisors as well as our SROs. So I've been going out and meeting with each, my team has been meeting with each building's team to talk about what's going on in the building, how are they starting to work together? So part of that is as we build that team, we're going to then be adding on more of that in-depth kind of relationship with our campus monitors and campus supervisors, our school supervisors. So that is part of our plan and some schools are already on it and doing that. Additionally, we have student supervisors at the buildings that help support as well. And so our cell TOSA, Chris Damiano, has been doing specific training for those folks in addition to our work with our social workers or counselors and student success coach. So to your question, yes, the long-term plan is to figure out how we're doing more of that wraparound support. And those of you who don't know, we have a student threat assessment team in the district and a student sexual incident response team in the district as well. And through that, we work collaboratively, we have our social workers, we have our safety and wellness TOSA on there. And we, our law enforcement partners have been, and our behavioral health and wellness community partners have been key to helping kind of that planning from the community side for a student as well as in the schools.
Thank you Danielle. So I have one last follow-up question. It goes back to the first question I had and I made an assumption about the three middle schools that don't have SROs. I have no idea what just happened there, but is that a choice where the principals to not fund for those positions? Or is that a school district?
Yeah, that's a good question Susan. Are, and I think the position you're speaking to is our campus supervisors, SROs are.
I misspoke, yeah.
So that is, it's a district level decision as those resources are allocated from our central office. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Donna?
Yes, I first would like to start by saying I do value all of your work. My brother happens to be a police officer in San Francisco, so I totally understand what, what your role is and how important it is for, for all of us. So, but I do have some questions. The first one is in the report, it talks about enhancing visibility by, by SROs. So, and that has been happening over time, which might've contributed to some of the concerns right now. So I just want to know, what does that look like? What have you been doing to enhance your visibility at, at these various locations?
Donna, if I may, hold on to that question until our SROs, until Kevin McDonald and Chad Martin have had the opportunity to speak to the role of the SRO in our schools, if you don't mind.
All right. So, so that, that was one question. I guess, I guess I have, my questions have to deal, deal with the SROs. So maybe I should just wait and I'll ask all of them then. That was my first one. Thank you.
Thanks Donna. Excellent.
For talking about the police department, I do have one question. I do have one. I know, I was looking at the peer court data, this has to do with the city of Beaverton. So Ron, so the chief, I forgot her last name, sorry, could address this one. So I'm sorry for, anyway, let me find your name on here so I could address you properly. So sorry about that.
And Donna, that is also part of the SRO report.
Oh, it is. Okay. Well, then I'll leave them all off to the end. Okay. Thank you.
And Rhonda's just fine, Ms. Tyner.
Are there any other questions for Rick specifically about the campus supervisor position? Okay, seeing none. And again, a pleasure to reintroduce Kevin McDonald and Chad Martin and they'll take it from here.
All right. Hopefully I can answer some of your questions. I am Kevin McDonald. I'm the School Resource Officer Sergeant for Beaverton Police. I'm really trying to figure out how to condense everything that the SROs do in any given day. I know the board has been given kind of a document that covers a lot of this. Really, any day of the week can be a different workload for the SRO. It can range from dealing with a social media threat. It can go from that to a, an overdose on a campus to a student who's having a mental health crisis, to something as simple as a SRO taking a theft report at a particular school. As far as coverage goes, the SROs with Beaverton, and we partner with Washington County, so I'm speaking a little bit for Washington County. I think Sergeant Martin's nodding his head. So we collectively kind of do similar roles within our agencies. But the SROs cover the primary high schools here in Beaverton and same in Washington County. But we also cover our theater schools, which would be the middle schools and elementary schools. So we'll take calls for service at those schools. We also do extra visibility on those campuses. Middle schools and high schools tend to be the bulk of our work as far as call for service. In an average year, we take about 3,500 calls for service within the school district. That's just for Beaverton. Washington County has their own numbers. But it's a large district. It's a city within a city. And the call for service do come in and they can range from things very, very minor to some very serious crimes where guns are being brought onto campus. Where weapons, knives, those types of things are on the campus. So it's, it's a varied thing, but our job isn't solely just law enforcement. You know, I've got anecdotal cases, I've got a few of them, I don't know if we're going to have time to share, but I'll try to condense the theme. And that is that students will come to their SRO when they have issues. I've had my SROs on my team share with me where students were having issues at home as far as housing, abuse at the house. One particular SRO relayed a story where he dealt with a particular student in middle school who was committing crimes. And that SRO ended up dealing with that situation and that, that student went through the juvenile justice system. However, that SRO maintained that relationship with that student as they progressed through their high school and eventually graduated. And later, this SRO told me, this is about a year or two later, this particular student was a victim of a crime in, in, out of the community. And the SRO happened to be responding to that scene. And that, that particular student conveyed how important the relationship that he had, even though he got in trouble back in middle school. That relationship changed his view and path. And that's, again, that's just one anecdotal scenario. But these are every day with our, our SROs. I can tell you firsthand, the fact that my SROs on my team have not been in the school has been difficult with all the COVID stuff. They love their work, they're invested in their students and they're invested in the staff and community within the school system. I do know, and just in gathering all this information, one glaring thing that I've noticed is the lack of understanding of what the SRO does. Yes, there are times where we have to apply the law and students may get arrested for a particular crime. But when we really look at the data as far as arrests, I know the board has this information. At least for the last three years here in Beaverton, 96% of our referrals to the juvenile system ended up being generated, generated either by the student, the staff or the community. Leaving slightly less than 4% of the SROs generating self-initiated. Simply most SROs don't really have time to do anything that's self-initiated. Their day is busy. And I would also like to impress on the board that SROs, although assigned to a particular school, are still police officers. If there's a crime in progress near a school, they're going to go. So those officers and deputies have to be ready for any scenario, whether it is in this community, the school community or outside of that school community. So with that, I think I'm going to stop and let my fellow colleagues chime in. Sergeant Martin, there you go.
Can you hear me okay? All right. So just for brevity, I'm not going to repeat everything that Sergeant McDonald said. But you know, our, our roles as SROs is not to be the profound authority figure in the schools necessarily. You know, we want to be problem solvers and a hub of resources for children. We want them to succeed just as much as anybody else. We cover 38 schools with over 20,000 students in those schools, 2,700 teachers. And we want to be part of the solution to any problems that come up. You know, one anecdotal story that I can share from one of our deputies involves a middle school student. Deputy McNeely had interaction with, with this child who was suffering from mental illness, was having problems with his father. Deputy McNeely was able to talk to his student and his father. And the child eventually went to the Hawthorne Watkins Center for Services. About a month later, this child came back to school, hit a knife on campus and was hearing voices, command voices to harm himself or others. And Deputy McNeely was able to locate the knife on campus and get the child to an emergency room for emergency psychiatric treatment. And the child, as he was, as, as he was adjusting to his new medications, they were out for most of the year. But when they came back, because of the positive interaction that Deputy McNeely built with this child, every day when this child would come, would come in, Deputy McNeely would greet him, just as every other student. And really built, built a positive rapport with this child and his family, which is very important. And with that, I think I'll go ahead and be quiet and open up for questions.
Excellent. It's, any of our other officers want to add any comments or are we good? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and start some questions? Donna, why don't you go ahead and start? You had several.
So I guess, I guess I'll start with my first question is about, in the report, there was a comment about enhanced visibility of the SROs over, over, over time. So I'm just kind of curious exactly what has that looked like? How has it manifested itself on the various campuses? And why was that necessary? First question.
So I, I think I can answer that. So is that, I don't have the report in front of me, so is that in reference to the overall program as it has progressed?
It seemed to be. I can't remember exactly. I just remember reading it and I made a note about it because it was, it was a statement made. And so I assumed it was an important statement, otherwise it wouldn't be in there. So I was just kind of curious what was behind that because there was no descriptors.
Right. I, I think just from the, how I'm understanding that and is essentially one of our concerns is the, the concept of active threat on our campuses. And I know that since school hasn't been in session, that's kind of a distant memory. But school violence has been at historic levels within this country, unfortunately. And so that's something that we have strived to promote more visibility to make our campuses more secure. So I think that's the context of that. I know that is, as the SRO program has changed back from the mid to late 90s, from a dare program to more of an SRO school resource program. That has been part of that component is the security of the campus to promote that safe school environment.
Thank you. My next question just has to do with, I'm sure you will agree with me because we both are aware not only of principals, but of teachers who involve SROs in frequently in more matters than they really shouldn't be involved in, which ends up creating a negative dynamic for some students. This could happen during the administrative support or the behavioral issues or just in the student flow context. So I'm just kind of curious, what sort of guidance do you give your officers for pushback? Because you know, I've heard from some teachers as well as principals, well, some teachers have said, principals always have you guys as the fallback guy. They contact you guys first as opposed to trying to deal with the situation themselves. So when you find yourself in that situation, what advice do you give them to tell the teachers, no, you can't deal with this, this is outside of our purview, this is not really a criminal matter and this is something you have to deal with?
I, I think you just said it. Those are some of the words that, that come out. So yes, officers and deputies have discretion. We recognize that certain things come into play with, whether it's culpability of the student, you know, how emotionally mature they are, the age, the context of the situation, the severity of the situation, all those come into play. I know most officers and most deputies typically, if school sanctions are appropriate, it's, it's the school that's going to deal with that. If it rises to the level of a criminal, you know, situation where, you know, they need to be charged and they will be routed through the juvenile system or they may go to our peer court system, which we have in Beaverton and I'm hoping maybe eventually Washington County will have that. But the officers are afforded the discretion and just because the school's reporting it doesn't mean that we as the police are going to take action if it doesn't rise to that necessity.
Donna.
Sorry.
Donna, I was going to say, I'm sorry. This is Dawn and I think some of it, some of the, some of the onus, the accountability needs to go on us too, because we have some inconsistency with administrators. And we need to do a better job of finding the best use for our SROs and what's allowable and what's not. So I want to take some accountability for that, that we need to get some consistencies internally within our system. Because when we met with all of our law enforcement officials and it was from every organization, Beaverton, Hillsborough and the Sheriff's Office, that was something they even pointed out that sometimes they feel that they're put in a situation that probably is not a policing position, situation. It's really an administrative position.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm concerned about that because, you know, the school district hasn't taken any leadership on that, in that regard. And this has been going on for years because we've seen, you know, the disproportionality of suspensions and expulsions and, and other things. And so I guess I would like to see the school district do something about that and give better guidance to principals and teachers. This has been going on too long, too long in my mind. And also I know that there is discretion on the side of the police. But I know that they've had some implicit bias training, but I guess I'm just concerned that they might, you know, depending on the police officer, maybe handle a student perhaps more aggressively than another student or maybe, I don't know. They, they end up having more of a significant consequence than another student who might've done the same exact thing. So I, I'm just concerned about that as well. And I guess then my last question has to do with the peer court. And I believe, maybe I missed this, I don't know. There really didn't seem to be any demographics of regarding peer court in Beaverton as to the number of students that are, you know, people of color versus, you know, non, students that are not people of color. people of color versus, you know, non, students that are not people of color. I guess I would like to see that, to see, because peer court seems to be another restorative justice, or another opportunity for a student to make good and not really get caught up in the criminal justice system. So I guess I'm just saying, I'd like to see some, some data on that at some point. And that's all I have.
Yeah, okay. Can I just answer that real quick? And actually back up to the, the administrators calling the police. One thing that I have found that works pretty effectively is really that relationship with the SRO and the administrators, and knowing their administration team, and having those open conversations before those situations happen, and having that communication so that they're, they're already knowing what's happening, or a simple phone call, hey, what do you think about this? Those, those phone calls like that seem to reduce issues down the road. Getting back to the peer court real quick, and I'll try to be brief here. So the district and Washington County Juvenile has been working on the Georgetown Juvenile Justice Reform, and one of the things that have been brought up is to have Washington County essentially handle the peer court concept. As it stands now, if students in Beaverton, they could go to the peer court, but let's say they're in Washington County, they wouldn't have that option. So then you kind of get into an equity issue, but that's a bigger, larger thing that still needs to be worked out, and I'll stop.
Kevin, Donna asked.
Thank you.
Donna was asking the question about ethnicity. Do we have any background on that, or is that information we could gather?
Could you repeat the first part of that idea there?
Yeah.
So I can restate it. In the peer court reports that I saw, there was no information about the demographics of the students that were recommended for peer court, and the process, you know, at the end of it, how many people had a good outcome or a bad outcome. So since it was in demographics and for every other thing, I was wondering why it wasn't presented if you have it, and if you don't have it, why not?
I don't think we have the data. I do remember asking our coordinator, but I don't know if that's something that's recorded without maybe hand checking every report, which sometimes it's not a full report. So I don't know, I'd have to double check to get you an answer on that, but I don't think the data is there.
Yeah, so I, I didn't think so, but I was saying, why not have it in the future? To me, that would be something important to know, because we know exactly which type, what is the typical type of student that's being recommended for peer court? Because peer court is something that is generated by the police officer, or by the school, I think. But, so I just want to see how many students of color, for example, are recommended over non-white students, and there's no information that I have for that. So I was hoping that this is something you could do in the future. That was also, it was a statement and a request, if possible.
Excellent. Thank you, Donna. I've captured all of that. So it's, we absolutely want to make sure that we continue to make improvements in systems. And Donna, you made a point, one of your points also was about administrative overreach in terms of our SROs. When I have become aware of those situations, and I've been made aware of several of those in the last five years while I've been in this position, I have actually gone and I do meet with the administrative team and talk very specifically about the role and what overreach had occurred, and how it should have been dealt with in a different fashion. Now, I can't say that it's probably every situation that's occurred, have I been made aware of, and part of that is, is what Kevin talked about, is that level of relationship that our SROs have with their building administration to say, and be able to sit down with them to say, you know what, this is not appropriate for me to be involved in, and that type of thing. I would say, and the part that we do need to own, and I'm happy to own that piece, is that overarching review with our all administrators across the district in terms of the role of the SRO, when it's appropriate and when it's not, being able to have some models of, just so that it's very clear, when gaining access into an SRO to deal with a situation is appropriate, and when it's not. So that's still a work in progress, but certainly an avenue that we will pursue.
And one other thing I'd like to mention too, is in the student handbook, there is reference to when potentially, depending on the consequences, you might involve police. It seems like that would be an appropriate place to put in some guidance, because ultimately, when parents have issues, they're going to consult with that book. And so if they have something in there that they can hold their, their hat on, then when they go and they talk to schools, or they talk to the police department, they can say, hey, did you follow this? Did it follow under the guidelines? And I think that would take a lot of the, that might take some of the, the problems away, and it would also be a reminder to teachers and principals that they can't do the things that they've been doing now.
Excellent. Thank you, Donna. All right. And Brian, question?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm curious about, you know, I know that some of the feedback that the various police departments have been getting this year is similar to feedback that as a school district we struggle with as well. So I'm curious what you're doing to diversify your workforce, to be more representative of our community. You know, I appreciated Rick saying, you know, we are the community, and the, the community reflects us, but I know, at least as a school district, we've really struggled with that, and I'm curious how you're making progress.
This is Sheriff Garrett, I can take a dive into that. Thank you very much, Anne, for your question. So no surprise, the Sheriff's Office is primarily, the majority of our uniformed personnel are male and white, which is one reason why our only full-time deputy recruiter is a female, number one. It's not because she's a female, she's, she's super qualified, she was the best candidate to be that full-time recruiter, she just happens to be female, which is, which is a bonus for us. Number two, we are seeing diversification in a recruiting class as a function of a diverse community. So it takes us on the government side longer than our rapidly changing community to diversify, but it is happening, it's just happening by all metrics, it's happening too slow. We at the Sheriff's Office are, are working with, for example, with our Latino community leaders to establish a Sheriff's Office Latino Advisory Commission, and one of our goals is to, is to have deeper engagement into our Latino youth, to attract them. We kind of have a, like a push from the community and a pull from us to, to, to increase our, our bilingual, bicultural, Latino, uniformed staff. But we clearly have more work to do. It's, it's a long-term effort, but it's a priority. So thank you for your question.
Chief, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to piggyback on what Sheriff Garrett said. We, we, we realize we need to have a police force that represents our community, and that's been a goal of ours for years. But, you know, like, like Sheriff said, it takes time to diversify, but we are trying, we are making efforts. I'm working with the Human Rights Advisory Committee. I routinely ask them and the Diversity Advisory Board Committee, what can we do to bring in, give us tips, and, or what do we need to be doing out there in the community to get police officers that represent our community? So it is a work in project, progress, and it's very challenging, but that is one of our top priorities.
Excellent. Thank you. Leanne?
Thank you. I would love to hear from our law, law enforcement community that's represented here. You are probably as aware as we are of the feedback that we've gotten from our BIPOC community, and some of their feelings about SROs. What would you suggest? I would love to hear from you. You're in our schools, you're in our communities. What can we collectively do to improve, to speak to some of their concerns? Do you have some suggestions, changes? I just, kind of an open-ended question.
I'll dive into that one.
Okay, I'll jump in if I need to.
Oh, go ahead, Jim, sorry.
One of the things that I would like to see more is if we could get some invites into some of those student groups, and we can interface with different students that meet throughout the campuses, I think that would benefit the schools greatly. I could see it opening up our SROs a little bit more to student groups that they may not normally have access to. So that's one suggestion that I have. Kevin?
Yeah, I would echo what Sergeant Martin said. I think having the invitations to talk with those groups, I think the SRO program as a whole is probably the best conduit for law enforcement to connect with students. And, you know, I, I understand that there's questions. One of the things that we've done as a department historically is we've done what is called the Student Academy within the high schools, and unfortunately, it's one day that they get to see, the students get to see how police interact in the community and learn about the department. It's not really a tool to recruit people who are interested in law enforcement, more of a tool to help students understand what law enforcement role is in, in our community. So conduits like that are great to interact, but really, it's the simple conversations, whether it's at lunchtime, sitting at a table, or meeting with groups, and formally being part of the school community, so that the student understands the role that we have, and hopefully those barriers are broken, and that they, they understand the job, and maybe down the road, they want to do this job. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
And I'll just add one more thing. I'd like to, you know, if possible, if our SROs could integrate with the teachers and counselors more with their trainings and meetings, I think that would be another avenue that would lead to success.
Excellent. Thank you. Becky, you got a question?
Thank you. I would just like to ask Sheriff Garrett and Chief Gershong, you need to make a, this, this is a very important partnership, is a partnership that both of your, the city of Beaverton and Washington County make an investment with your officers in your time. I'd like to know what it is that you say every year to your commissioners, to your city council, of why this investment is important in our schools?
I'll answer, I'll go first on that one. Just keeping our kids safe, and the, the, one of the ways a lot of violence happens at schools, kids report sexual abuse at home, in the schools, and the SROs are oftentimes the first ones to hear about this, and they bring that information, and that comes from, you know, to be investigated, and that comes from these good partnerships that we have with, with the schools, and working on the trust that our officers have in the schools with the students. And it's, it's imperative, you know, Sergeant McDonald put together a, a pretty big document that I think you all have, and it outlines some of the threats, if it's the report I'm thinking of, of, and the threat mitigation that we intercede in. We're able to, for example, somebody brings a gun to school, a student brings a gun to school, or has plans, has a manifesto of coming to school the next day to, you know, shoot some students. The SROs intercede a lot of that, and, and are able to bring about a positive resolution to something that could go very badly. And that's not widely known, because it's, it's not widely advertised to the parents and, and some of this, you know, the school staff. But they're invaluable in keeping bad things from happening that we've seen across the nation, bad incidents happening. They know the staff, they know the layouts of the school, if something, God forbid, were to happen at one of the schools, the SRO is going to have the contacts inside the school, and they are, have intricate knowledge of the layout of the school, whereas a regular patrol officer may not have that contact in the school, or the, the knowledge of the layout of the school. So they're invaluable at mitigating, you know, catastrophic events before they happen. And that's what I would, I would say to sell the SROs, or what I do say.
Thank you, Chair, Chair, Tim, Tim Chuck, and very similar to what Chief Gershong said, to me, it's, comes down to relationships, and there's three points I would make. Number one, the relationships that SROs have with those students and that staff, it solves crime. When there are victims and survivors of crime, we can get off on the right foot and save time and effort and have better outcomes from a, from a, from just a criminal justice standpoint. Just as important, those relationships help prevent crime, that Chief Gershong was talking about. We have anecdotal stories of close calls that were able to be prevented because of that relationship the SROs have. And just a data point, as my third and final point, a data point from, from last spring, in, as we were talking about the Public City Local Option Levy, our juvenile department provided total referrals countywide of juveniles to the juvenile department from 2008 to 2018, that 10-year span, referrals went down about 48%. So we are, you know, from a total referral standpoint, I think we're going in the right direction. We're still the safest major urban county in, in, in this, in the state. When you, when you, when you look at the five most populated counties in the state, we have the lowest crime rate countywide. And so we're, we're, it's, it's the relationship that we have in schools helps solve, prevent crime, and then we are, we're on a downward trend over a long period of time when it comes to juvenile referrals, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Donna, you have another question?
Yes, I'm just kind of curious as to what sort of cultural awareness or de-escalation training the officers have, and let me sort of give you an example here. You know, so, you know, when a student is in the crosshairs, if you want to call it, and, and so, you know, there's a tendency for them to ask questions as to why this is happening to them, and sometimes, I have seen it myself, sometimes police officers are not very patient in standing there and answering the questions before things escalate. Then there's also the situation where, depending on a person's culture, they're not used to looking somebody in the eye, and I've witnessed that myself, where you've seen police officers say, hey, look me in the eye, and if the person doesn't, that's a sign of disrespect, and then that might end up escalating the situation. So I just want to know, what sort of training do you give your officers on that? Do you counsel them on that when they're, they're interacting with students? Now, I'm talking about the majority of cases. We're not talking about somebody with a gun, we're not talking about somebody who's threatening somebody else, but we're just talking about class flow, support, people who are having maybe a meltdown of whatever nature, because maybe someone called them the N-word and they, they punched them in the nose. And what are you doing about that part, as far as trying to make that person feel like, you know, they're not going to be punished for someone initiating something and antagonizing them? No, I know I put a lot in there.
And Donna, several of those, several layers in what you just gave would be at the school level. That would not be necessarily law enforcement involved, but I, I think that they can speak to the de-escalation training and, and background.
Well, the reason why I ask it, because I, I would assume that the police department would like to do all that they can to make people feel comfortable, so I guess maybe the next question is, if they don't do that, then why not? And maybe they're not prepared to answer it now, maybe they'll get back to me later, but it's something that I think they should, they should consider, because it isn't every, every incident, you don't have someone that's an employee of the school district, or a parent or teacher with you by your side to help you with that part. So it seems like that would be important training to have.
Agreed, agreed. And I've got, I want law enforcement to be able to address any training that they have in terms of de-escalation. My comment was specific, and you gave the example of a student getting punched in the face after being called a name. That is a school-level matter. That would not be something we would hand over to law enforcement, so I wouldn't say that they're always involved in all circumstances of the school. But law enforcement partners, if you want to address de-escalation strategies?
Yeah, I'll address that. So just not for our school resource officers, but for all our officers, they go through de-escalation training, and in fact, we do that, we just got done doing that in our mandatory in-service training. That is our number one goal, whether it be a school incident or an incident out in our community away from the school, is de-escalation. That's what we need to be good at, that's what, why we're constantly training on it and keeping officers up to date on that. In addition, we're looking at getting all of our SROs, not all of them are currently CIT trained, or critical incident trauma trained, there's a 40-hour class, we're going to work on that. But, but de-escalation is what we have to do, you know, 90% of the time. We don't want to come to a, a call, whether it's in the school or not, and, and escalate things to make it worse. And so we're constantly training and working on tactics to better, get better at de-escalating And so we're constantly training and working on tactics to better, get better at de-escalating certain situations.
Thanks for your question, Donna. Beginning in 2015, we started a DEI training and facilitated discussions, regular feature as far as in-service training goes. We started with contracting with an outside group called Figuring, and then we had a diverse staff of sheriff's office members come and say, look, we want to do this. We want to carry the ball for this organization. We're diverse group, we're multidisciplined, send us to training, help us figure out how to do this. And we spent over a year getting them ready and we have an internal group now that does this. We have discovered however, that we're coming up short because we don't have that community voice. So that two months ago, we started a working group involving diverse community members to incorporate their voice into our next update that we're planning for 2020, 2021. COVID kind of kicked us off a year. But from a diversity, equity, inclusion standpoint, that's the direction that we're headed. And from a de-escalation standpoint, much like Beaverton did, you know, we took a really hard look at eight can't wait. We built de-escalation as a requirement into our policy when feasible. And that's, that's a requirement. It's no longer just recommended. And when we go to the, to train, scenario-based training is, grounds us in being prepared to deal with what deputies see in the community. And every one of those scenario-based trainings that we have, when we unplug and go to the training center, involves de-escalation because that's really part of building trust is to de-escalate. Now, the last thing I'll say is, we're human, right? So we don't get it perfect every time. And we, when we don't get it right, then of course accountability, corrective action, counseling comes into place. And I get that's a huge responsibility on our leadership to do and we're focused on getting that right.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anne, you had another question?
Do, and I'm not sure who it's for. So I'll just put out there what I'm wondering and I'm sure there's a lot of experts here. I've faced tonight's discussion. I know Chair Tim Chuck at the end is going to say, board members, what other information do you need? And I will be the first to say that this is not my area of expertise at all. Like I have done a lot of studying about curriculum and about how students develop and, you know, I know a lot of, and how to be cost efficient with school dollars. But I don't know very much about policing and in particular how we can, what the trends are in terms of developing strong partnerships and how, you know, if you look, I'm guessing that 20 years ago, what Beaverton was doing was actually not that different than what was happening, you know, in another state or something. Maybe we were, I mean, I know we like to be different, but I'm guessing that whatever the dare equivalent was, was in other places as well. I'm curious about what the overarching trends are in terms of how we are working to ensure student safety across the nation. As I knew you made reference tonight, you know, school shootings have been omnipresent threat. I know that there are other traumatic experiences that students nationwide are going through, you know? What is it that's happening in the bigger, beyond Beaverton that we should be learning from in order to work well with our community and to support parents and teachers in the everyday work of raising children?
Anne, I'm waiting for the first unmute.
All right. I'll unmute. It's a little bit broad, so I will just speak on what I know. And that is that, you know, I can't predict what schools are going to look like safety-wise, but if we look at the trends that have happened in the U.S., school violence has been a concern. We do, in this district, have a robust relationship. Our student threat assessment or student safety team has worked well. I know Leslie Rogers with the district has spearheaded that team and we really have worked through taking students who were considered or who are considering acts of violence, not a pathway to violence. And by coming together as a community, steering them away from that path. And we've seen students who made serious threats, maybe even took steps towards those threats. And we were able to, as a team, a community team, not just law enforcement, not just mental health, not just the juvenile department, not just the school district, but as a team collectively worked together to steer that student off of the path and eventually watch them graduate and, and, you know, it was just a portion in their life that they were having a difficult time in. So that partnership, I've witnessed it personally within the district, that's something that we've done very well. If I were to ask what I would want for the, from the district to help us do a better job, I can tell you that students with disabilities and behavioral issues, having the district provide us with that training would be phenomenal. It helps us understand when students are acting out because they have behavioral issues and that helps us understand what need, what path needs to happen. So I'm kind of losing my train of thought here, but that's my two cents.
Excellent, thank you. I'm going to jump back to questions. Susan, you had a question?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for taking your time today to talk to us. It's been very informational. I do have a question and it's kind of relating back to, we have the Student Advisory Committee in our school district and I don't, I think you've met with them a few times, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, you know, in terms of communication, communication to work with them more often so that that breaks down some of that fear base that, because it's a very diverse group of kids, some of that fear that might, our students might have and that's pretty much it.
No, that's a great suggestion, Susan. And I would say that, I know that our law enforcement partners, I've heard it from Sheriff Garrett as well as Chief Gershong, in terms of how is it we can continue to reach out and potentially even formulate additional groups outside of our school with greater context for diversity to be more inclusive? Because not all of our kids just simply attend our schools or reflected there. We only, we serve only about 24% of our population in the city. So we've got a lot of other families out there. So I know that those are ongoing conversations, but a good point, thank you. Appreciate that. So with that, because I know we do have our third component here this, this evening, I wanted to thank our law enforcement partners here, but I want to hand it back to Becky Timchuck.
And I too want to thank, and especially Lieutenant Richards and Sergeant Gilbert. I don't want you to think you, you spent your evening with us sitting in a car and City of Hillsborough is a newer partner to us at the Kaplan Center. I don't know if there's anything that you want to give us. I know you didn't have a real chance before we schooled, went to distance learning to spend a year with us yet, but I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add?
I will just take the opportunity, thank you very much. We have one SRO, Adela Rio, serving at the Base Academy on 185th. And I guess I just want to say I appreciate so much the partnership that we have as a department with our schools and Beaverton School District is one of those partnerships. I think the one thing that I really want to say is how important trust is to our success. Police departments rely on trust to be able to serve the community and to the best impact or to the best effect. And one of the, in my experience, one of the main benefits to a good SRO program is the opportunity to build trust with our community partners. Just about everyone in the community is connected to the school district in some way. And so being at the schools consistently and taking every opportunity to build relationships and build trust really helps us to serve our communities, particularly the most vulnerable of our communities. And I think that's, in my opinion, the value and benefit. And I'm just excited to work collaboratively and, and come up with ways that we can respond to the concerns of our community, particularly those BIPOC community members who I think would benefit immensely as well as a police department from increased trust and collaboration with the police department. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and I really appreciate the perspective shared today.
Can I sneak in there? Donna here. So I know we're always looking for CTE opportunities. So my thing is, why not grow your own? Meaning, just to consider, have a police academy in each of our high schools. I think that would serve multi-purposes because then maybe you get people of color. I must give a shout out, although I won't mention his name. There's even a Aloha High School student who's a friend of my son, who's a Beaverton police officer. I can see people shaking their heads, who's a person of color. So I mean, what an opportunity.
Excellent. With that note, I will pass the baton back to Becky for part three of our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you joining us.
I thank all of you for spending your evening with us. And this is the start of the conversation. I'm sure board members, like Anne said, we're going to be looking at what do we need to have next? And again, this is not an evening that we're making decisions or the superintendent is making any decisions. The board is gathering information because it's so important because all of our, all of our families, all of our students don't come from the same perspective and have the same lens. And we need to recognize that all of our students need to feel safe in our schools and feel valued. And thank you so much for spending your time with us and we will, I'm sure, be back to you again. But thank you so much. We appreciate it. So with that, we're going to welcome our own Pat McCurry. Thank you, Pat. Thank you for all of our community members for, for waiting with us this evening. Again, as we gather information and get lots of perspectives here tonight. So Pat, I'm going to have you introduce some of our community members that we have that are going to speak with us. And just, just a reminder to board members, we received about 20 public comments and those were, were sent to you on Friday and today. And I really would appreciate that you read the public comments of the public sharing with us some of their, their thoughts on this topic. So those were provided to you and will be part of the public record.
Thank you, Becky. Good evening, board, and thanks for having us. I, my name's Pat McCurry. I use he/him pronouns and I serve in the district as the administrator for equity and inclusion. And I was tasked for tonight's conversation with reaching out specifically to members of our community who I think are very much the reason we're having this conversation. Folks who represent either their own or others' viewpoints that may not be represented in the collective data that we saw in the summarized data from ECO Northwest. So I'm going to share a couple of words, but before I do that, I want to introduce our guests. From the Beaverton Student Advisory Council, we have Beatrice Khan, who as a student, probably with work to do in classes, I really appreciate taking time to come tonight. So Beatrice, thank you. We have Justice Regie, who's a member of our Beaverton Black Parent Union, specifically on the Public Safety Committee. We have Mark Jackson from REEP, which works with our students specifically in Beaverton and Aloha High Schools presently. And we have Jessica Pierce, who is a member of our Beaverton Educators for Black Lives. And each of them has been invited to share their perspectives. I want to point out in my role, I feel that it's important to advocate, in the same spirit that many of our board members were asking questions tonight, the invitation to share voices was put out to a number of people. And I think it's really important to note that many people declined the invitation, not because they didn't have a voice, but because of the process possibly that we went through and feeling as though their voice was not necessarily valued as much as others. And more importantly, for the feeling of a lack of safety in sharing their voice. There's a potential that those who have had negative experiences with law enforcement or with our school resource officers or in our schools, to ask them to come and share that experience could be a form of re-traumatization that is not, not safe for them to do. And so I just want to make a point of saying that though there are not more voices present, it's really important that we consider the voices that are not here because they do exist and they are out there among us. I also want to point out, I appreciate the summarized feedback that ECO Northwest provided for us. But I'm actually going to go into kind of a teacher mindset here for a moment. The fact that we have 72% of respondents who feel that the, the SRO presence is a good thing, that's great. I'm going to argue that just like a teacher giving a test, that 72% reflects what we would expect in the relationship. What we really need to pay attention to more is the 28% that felt either that the SRO relationship was not healthy or that they weren't sure. So I want to make sure that we enter into this conversation, not necessarily equating all viewpoints or not, especially not saying, let's look at those who have, have the strongest viewpoint, a majority rules situation. But instead that we really use this feedback as a way to focus our vision on who we need to listen to, whose voices we need to solicit. And with that, I really want to thank the board for some of the questions that you asked because I think in doing so, both of our ECO Northwest counterparts and our partners in law enforcement, in asking those questions, you pointed out that we still have a ways to go in, in really soliciting the input of those most impacted. I think it's also important, I don't share this to distract, but I think it's important that we contextualize this in the larger context. When we have a, a national climate in which we have specific students and families who have perceptions of law enforcement or real experiences with law enforcement that are negative, we cannot expect them to detach that from their experiences with SROs in our schools. For some of our students, they are very much the same thing. I have learned in this role throughout this, this year, I think we all have as our, as our role in serving others, that it's not so much our intent that matters as the impact of what we do based on that intent. And so I want to acknowledge both to our partners in law enforcement and to all of us in education. We are all people who are striving to serve our students and our community to the best of our ability. We're doing that in systems that have inherent flaws that we've inherited. So rather than be defensive of those flaws, I think what the feedback offers us is an invitation to listen to it, to hear what our critics are saying, and more importantly, to believe them when they say that, to not diminish their ideas by trying to explain what our intent was and to really focus on how we can be supportive of our students in the best possible manner. Safety is important, yes. When we look at, at the incidences that have happened around us in our schools, it is important to prepare for those. How we do so though, is also very important. If what we're dealing with is a predominant number of cases that deal with, with drugs and alcohol, that can be dealt with potentially a different way. I also want to appreciate that I was able to have a conversation with our partners in the Beaverton Police Department and learned that this, this is a conversation that involves us as well. And Superintendent Grodding had mentioned that. Much of this has to do with how we in our schools are utilizing our law enforcement partners. When I learned recently that, that some of our principals are using our, our SROs to do attendance checks on students who are not engaging, that's an area where we have some development to do. I don't think our first act of engagement should be with a, a police officer at a student's home where they're not engaging. So there's a, this is less about placing blame on different organizations and more about looking at what it is that we can do. So with that, I, I don't want this to be my time. I would rather defer to our guests. If it's okay, just to check with our speakers, since I didn't have a chance to check with you, the order I'd like to go in. Beatrice, if you're comfortable going first, I'd love to give the floor to you and then to Justice, Mark and Jessica in that order. And then we have time for questions afterwards. So Beatrice, go ahead and take it away and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you Chair Tim Chuck and members of the Beaverton School Board for soliciting student voices on this important issue. My name is Beatrice Teal Khan and I represent Beaverton High School to the School Board on the Beaverton Student Advisory Committee. Our student leadership team at Beaverton High School recently formed a committee and begun conversations about the presence of school resource officers. These conversations have included our principal, Dr. Anne Irwin, our SRO, Beaverton Police Officer Copeland, and as well as Sergeant McDonald for the Beaverton Police Department. This issue spreads beyond one school resource officer and more, and beyond one school. In order to make a decision that is best for the entire school district, we must ask, ask ourselves, what is the intended role for school resource officers? If a student needs a relationship with a trusted adult, an SRO seems like a great person for students to connect with. But for many, engaging in a discussion with an armed officer may be threatening and may harm what could have been a bond. For students at Beaverton High School, our relationship with our last SRO Officer Fry ended in February. And by the time we had a new SRO, the state had entered lockdown. Our experience with SROs has to do with the high turnover rate. And as much as a mutual relationship with an SRO is ideal, most students lack interaction with a consistent SRO and some find the relationship hindered by the presence of a gun. This role as a mentor can be fulfilled by security members, counselors, or our school social workers. What if the district replaced SROs with more counselors and mental health access? I urge the School Board to consider which adults we need in schools, the roles you expect each of the adults to play, and use data and metrics to determine whether those influential adults need to be armed or sworn law enforcement officers. Once the district understands which adults are needed, it can make a better decision about the potential role of SROs as well as other professionals in our school building. Students need role models to talk to and to connect with. And for many students, armed SROs are a barrier, not a solution.
Thank you, Beatrice. Justice, would you like to chime in?
Yes, please. Thank you for having me tonight. So I'll start with two names. I'm, this is what I gave him. One of the founders, one of the coordinating committee, members of the Public Safety Committee, as it is, for the Beaverton Black Parent Union. Also, in my hat that I wear during the day, I manage several programs of workers, youth and families involved with the criminal justice system, juvenile justice system, and the adult side system. So some of my work in that space informs some of the things that I can share at this time. The the issue of how, what, what is the actual deployment initiative of, of, of SROs? How they are activated, how they're engaged, and how they're asked, what things they're asked to respond to? And there's, you know, different data around the, the the challenges, especially for, you know, black children that exists with, you know, the, not just the presence of the officer, and this is not necessarily about the officer in the building alone, but also the history and the thread of time that is not easy to cognitively separate yourself from. It would be great if every instance in life could be taken as what's happening right now, but that is not how humans function. That is not how we experience life. And so therefore, when we come into a space, and even as a person, I've been here for 16 years, but even in my initial movement, move to this community, you know, the experience of a lot of people who are here in the 90s and prior was not the most positive. Right? And I had to experience this place on my own terms, but that doesn't move, remove that history and that experience because who was responsible, who wasn't responsible. Some of the thoughts that have come up in our discussion around this has been, you know, what is the intent? How is it managed? What does accountability look like? How do parents give feedback? And crossing over also a blurriness around the role of SROs versus the role of school-based security staff. And again, if there's an issue with, with either, how does someone get satisfaction, to get clarity? Is there responsiveness? Is there, is there acceptance of the idea that you are actually accountable to even one individual that's not having a good experience with you, even though everyone else feels great? Or at least appears to feel great. The, um, so, you know, we are still in some deliberation around, and I'm glad that this, one of our big concerns actually coming to this meeting was this a decision-making meeting? Because there was definitely concern that there was, we did not feel that there was a sufficient level of engagement that we could even giving input, that we would be giving input in, in a way that was reasonable. So I think those are the, the good points, main points for me. And that I, I, I think we would be very interested in further discussion, like whatever decisions come down the line. I think the reality of accountability and what are the, what is the guidelines and the rules of what all of these roles are. Oh, one thing I do need to add is also, generally, my experience is the concern of the accessibility. And sometimes police officers, being the primary person that's in the building when there are other public health, mental health, general cultural support entities, that would also be great to have frontline access and a high level of engagement and support by administrative staff to be there for the students in those buildings. And, you know, that is not always, that's not necessarily something that is, that is done. Right? And some consistency with that would, uh, would, would also be my challenge to like, why are we, why do we focus on this particular aspect and not all these other aspects that can bring around well-being and safety? So with that, I'll pass it.
Thank you, Justice. Mark, go ahead. Oh, we got you on mute, Mark.
Thank you, Patrick. Members of the board and Superintendent Grodding, appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I want to certainly acknowledge and support Beatrice and Justice and their remarks. I think as one who is director and co-founder of REEP as organization, and we've been with the district dating back to 2007, we've seen so much, and I think that the, the district has an opportunity in this moment to really, I think, bring to bear more clarity of the role of the resource officers in schools. I think that's, that's low-hanging fruit to really, I think, calm a lot of the anxiety and mistrust that often many of our students and adults may feel who enter the building. I think there's also opportunity to explore how that particular officer can be fully integrated into the community of the school. As Justice mentioned, sometime they're perceived as militarized, isolated presence, and they lack the connectivity with all the other resources in the actual building that are there to support the social, emotional, and academic well-being of our students. So I think we all can agree upon the importance of our kids and our adults in the buildings being safe. I think we have common ground there. The question becomes, how do we bring more clarity and understanding on the purpose of the CROs? And how to, in fact, utilize them in a more meaningful, proactive way to where how they show up in their presentation, right, may be less threatening. We've done listening sessions with our students. Matter of fact, early today, I already had on the calendar a, a discussion with the police chief. And she talked to some of our staff around what students are experiencing in the buildings, a real robust conversation that'll be ongoing. And one thing we made it clear was, is that it's important that the students understand the vision of the police chief that represents the law enforcement in the city of Beaverton. And how do we mirror that standard and that sense of empathy and inclusion within our school systems? So we'll have ongoing conversations. We made very clear, it's important to really build alliance with students, not just from a perspective around, let me go and find something I can kind of bring resolve to by my law enforcement. How do you build relationships, right, and build rapport with students in, in these school environments that will help, I think, mitigate a lot of the mistrust that we know is historic, especially with students of color? So I think as you all continue to have dialogue and explore this particular topic and issue, keep in mind, what was the original intent for the SROs? And, and, and how do we, in fact, integrate them into the, into the broader community with other resources that are being deployed in the schools? And how do we ensure that the first priority is, is building trusted relationships with students that's not connected to isolated incidents? And I think that's very, very important, that we understand our SROs have to be considered as an ongoing resource, not just around just safety. Public safety is not just around crime, vandalism, but also it's the mental and health and well-being of our students. And they, in fact, feel that these SROs are trusted adults, right, that have their best interests at heart. If we can have that lens, it provides for us a more holistic and comprehensive perspective of how we best leverage these resources in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. And Jessica, go for it.
Hi, my name is Jessica Pierce. I'm the Alternative Solutions Coordinator here in the Beaverton School District. And I'm working with a team dedicated to dismantling racist exclusionary discipline processes, which are rooted in white supremacy and anti-blackness, and replacing those with anti-racist and restorative practices. I am also a member of the Beaverton Educators for Black Lives, which is a group of BSD classified certified and admin personnel committed to anti-racist work that breaks down white supremacy and anti-blackness in the BSD. We sent a collective letter to the School Board and the Beaverton City Government in late July regarding SROs. We had over 70 signatures of staff, community members, graduates, and families. This is my kiddo. And to which the board responded. We then sent a reply to the board last week with close to 70 signatures again, and that is what I'm going to read today to ensure that it's on the public record. I did want to make a couple of extra notes. One, there is very little data nationwide that the presence of SROs has reduced school shooting. A 2018 Washington Post analysis of nearly 200 incidents of gun violence on campus, found only two times where a school resource officer successfully intervened in a shooting. The last note that I wanted to add is my two children, one of whom you just saw, my six-year-old, who's a BSD first grader, my daughter, who's a BSD fourth grader, both asked as they were listening, where are the students here? And where are the Black and Latinx students? One moment, I'm going to mute my child for a moment.
She's the reality of Zoom. Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Thank you all.
Noah.
Oh, one moment. I'm going to change locations for a moment, and I will be right back.
Why don't we use this time, if it's okay? Board members, Jessica was going to share her piece, and then we were going to leave some time for questions. I'm wondering if there are any questions for, for Beatrice, Mark, Justice, myself? Now, now would be an appropriate time to ask, or an appropriate time to stand up and take a stretch if you wanted to, either one.
I like the idea of a stretch. But, and I guess the other thing, Pat, maybe it's, like, we did receive the letter. I'm, I'm certain one of us could read it if Jessica would find that helpful.
Okay, let's check with Jessica. Okay.
Hi.
Jessica, Anne, Anne did just suggest if it, if it's hard, because I think we are all dealing with COVID realities, one of our, our board members could read the letter for you if that's easier, unless you have found the sanctuary in your house.
I think I have found in our 1,400 square foot home with four people, two cats and a hedgehog, relative quiet for five minutes, which is all I need.
Thanks for bringing reality into the meeting.
That's what I do. Okay. Thank you for your response to our first letter regarding SROs in the Beaverton School District schools. We feel strongly that any decision regarding SROs needs to center the needs and voices of our Black, Latinx, and Indigenous students and families. We are glad to hear that you feel the same way. We want to take this opportunity to reflect on our original demands and to continue to amplify how important it is to reject white-centered processes and quote reforms in the course of this work. We read the message you sent to the Beaverton School District community in early August and reviewed the first survey questions. We were disappointed that the survey was presented only with information about the SRO program as outlined by the Beaverton Police Department, with no accompanying data about the well-documented harm done to Black, Latinx, and Indigenous students by SRO programs across the country. The presentation also did not clearly address the critical side-by-side comparison of the racial demographics of BSD, Beaverton, and students referred to the BPD through SROs. It also did not address referrals to SROs through the Washington County Sheriff Office, nor did it address the referral data on students being funneled into the Washington County Juvenile System, which shows the Latinx students in particular are overpoliced in our schools. We demand to see that data front and center in the public and transparent accounting of the SRO program. We were also disappointed that the survey was only available in English, unless a user knows how to select the translate button, which itself operates in English. They are not able to do that. They are unable to access the content of the survey. Additionally, the survey went out primarily by email with a very tight turnaround time. Those decisions create barriers and center white families, which is the opposite of anti-racist work. The survey also made no concerted effort to gather demographic information in regards to race, ethnicity, language, sexual orientation, and gender identity. Research clearly shows that SRO programs do more harm to Black, Latinx, and Indigenous students, as well as students who identify as LGBTQ+ and students who receive special education services. Beaverton is not exempt from this trend. During the July 28th City Council meeting, a recording was played featuring the voices of BSD, Black, and Latinx students, sharing the ways that SROs have negatively impacted their education. Have School Board members listened to this recording? If not, we expect that all of you will, and will share with the public what you hear and how it informs your understanding of the impact that SROs have on BIPOC students in the Beaverton School District. We demand that the upcoming focus groups and all other outreach tools in this process be explicitly anti-racist, widely accessible, culturally affirming, and center Black, Latinx, and Indigenous students and families. We also expect the School Board to be transparent about the third party responsible for collating and presenting the responses from that survey, which we heard from tonight. And we expect to see that you chose a third party per recommendations from Black community members to ensure fidelity to anti-racist practices throughout this process. And unclear at this point if that is entirely what happened. We were glad to see that in addition to the survey that was sent out to the BSD community members, the Beaverton School Board will be conducting focus groups that represent staff, parents, and students of color. This was encapsulated in demands two and four in our first letter. We look forward to hearing more information about how those focus groups will be coordinated, how they will utilize culturally affirming practices that keep BIPOC students and families at the heart of this work, how the results of those focus groups will be used to influence any future decisions about SROs, and the extent to which BIPOC staff, students, and families will have a say in how funds currently spent on SROs will be reallocated if the decision is made to remove them from the BSD. We also expect to hear more from the School Board about the other demands in our letter. Per Don Grodding's back, back-to-school message, will the board hire an outside consultant or agency specializing in anti-racist work to guide decisions such as whether to remove SROs from schools? The city of Beaverton hired an equity consultant who conducted, conducted listening sessions. Is the School Board planning on hiring a separate consultant? Is there a way to coordinate and collaborate with the work that the city of Beaverton is already doing? How will the School Board thoroughly review and present the research that already exists regarding the harmful impact of SROs in schools on Black, Latinx, and Indigenous students? How will the board then ensure a transparent accounting of the ways in which that research influences the board's decision about SROs in BSD? Finally, in your message to the BSD community, you mentioned that SROs will not have a presence in BSD schools until at least November 13th. A concerned staff member at Aloha High School shared, at Aloha, SROs are in fact maintaining an in-person, on-campus presence. The SRO assigned to Aloha has been there every time I have been there, and never wearing a mask, I might add. He is frequently in the background of onsite staff Zoom calls and was even in our welcome video in full gear and armed. If the School Board is implying there is no SRO presence during CDL, that seems dishonest, end quote. In this uncertain time of budget cuts amidst a global pandemic, is the best choice to continue to fully fund SROs when they will not be able to perform the duties outlined in their intergovernmental agreement? This could be months, if not an entire school year, where the school funds SROs, even though they are not providing services to our schools. What roles will SROs have during CDL, and are those roles that would be better suited to professional educators, paraprofessionals, social workers, and or counselors? The BSD has the opportunity to temporarily divert SRO funding towards services that will actually benefit students during these challenging times. But the very least, until in-person learning resumes, no more permanent decision around the future of SROs in BSD is decided. Thank you again for your response. We look forward to continued discussion and meaningful anti-racist action around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, and thanks again to Beatrice, Mark, and Justice as well. And I think we'd love to open it up for questions. And Donna, I saw that in the chat, you've got some questions that you wanted to ask, so go for it.
Yes, I'd like to direct this to Mark and/or Justice, and I've got two questions. So my first one is, I know that, Mark, you talked about, about how, you know, developing trusting relationships between SRO and students and how that is really important. And I know that, you know, you're intimately involved with students through the REEP program, so you probably have a good pulse on that. So what sort of advice, if you were asked by the SROs, would you give them on maybe some training that they would need that they don't already have? Or how they, what sort of skill sets they would need beside empathy and humility to be a good, to establish those good trusting relationships with students?
Great question, Donna, and thank you. If okay, Justice, I can start off. Justice, you can fall behind me. I, I, I would say that it begins with the physical appearance. I do think that what I have seen, what I've heard from our students and staff is that oftentimes they've seen CROs come on the campuses, use the word militarized, you know, they're armed with all the vest gear on, and it seems very intimidating and threatening to communities of color, students of color. If there could be some type of modification in the dress code to where that SRO really blends in again with the culture of the school community that would bring more integration as opposed to a standout. Again, we're all for safety, but from hearing directly from students and seeing some best practices, I think that really kind of dismisses and mitigates a lot of the actual mistrust, because, okay, this person has a common, familiar presentation like everybody else that are adults in the building with the understanding that they're there for their safety, but they're integrated in such a way to where they're more approachable and not, and not so much feeling a sense of threat. That will be the initial, I believe, low-hanging fruit. I think secondly, to really encourage SROs to be supported with of a range of, of, of engagement, you know, in terms of students seeing the SROs really integrated in the mission and the work of the school communities. You're not just walking around with, with eyes open. Not just walk around with eyes open like their Secret Service, but how can we build a sense of integration where they're part of school activities, things that don't necessarily have them connected to a limited or restricted to discipline solely? How do we get them integrated into more of the other dynamics within the actual school campus that shows students, okay, it's not just about discipline or threat issues, but, you know, we have people here who care about us as well. Those are some two things I've heard directly from students and our staff and myself directly, I believe, would have great immediate impact in terms of the mistrust.
I can add, I can add, I mean, REAP has much more exposure with our kids than outside my own children. And so I would do that, families I have a relationship with, but so I can second those similar, those same viewpoints that've come up, you know, in our conversations with parents talking to their kids and with my own kids. The other, I think, point maybe I can add to that would be, from my perspective as someone who works in prevention and intervention work specifically in my with youth and families who are involved with, you know, what we would classify as organized, so to speak, street organizations, as I refer to them sometimes, referred to as gangs. If you're gonna have a relationship with a student, you have to have a relationship with the student. And that means a ceding of power, a ceding of authority and a certain level of, you have to accept the level in terms that the student sets, not the family sets. So if the family doesn't trust you, you don't have the, that's a you issue. That's not a them issue. And often the challenge that I've seen on, you know, in both sides of the line where there's difficulty is the person, you know, with the privilege and authorities involved in the place of the officer, maybe doesn't pick up that the trust is something they have to work double on to earn. They're not just gonna get it. And if, you know, I don't know what the particular training modality is for that, you know, within the profession, I have a good peer and a mentor who has done some advocacy work in the profession. And it's one of the things that, you know, he speaks to is that you have to really learn how to build relationships with people and honor that relationship. You know, that's not always easy to transfer or anything to do, but that's the point I could add to what Mark did.
And I think also, Donna, and get the foot over to you, but I would certainly say in terms of a suite of training services to consider would in fact be form-informed, practice, restorative practice, anti-racist practice, implicit biases. These are clear, I think, topics of national discussion that our institutions that we're seeing now really see the value of. And I think as much training that can reflect those priorities would be impactful, not just for the actual SROs, but also to help contribute to an inclusive and safe school environment for all students.
Oh yeah, I think I could add, if not too much. The pillars in the 21st Century Report on Policing are actually a very good place to start. I mean, the eight is, they can't wait are exerted in many ways from that much deeper body of work. And if folks are not familiar with that, I'd be happy to send you the link to read the report.
Yeah, so please send me the link, I really would like to read that. And then I have one more question. And so if you could create an SRO program, what would that look like? I guess, what role do you think the SRO officer should play? I think you already touched upon it already about building trusting relationships, but is there anything else that you could add or you think we should add?
Well, I want to go back to the SRO again being set up for success when it comes to being fully integrated into the school community, specifically with not just the school staff and students, but also the other services that are there at the school. You know, whether it be the Black Parent Union, they may have things they may be doing with parent engagement or with REAP or other organizations that are there to support students. It's very, very important that they see the value of integration. You know, I would also add, in terms of what makes SRO programs successful, is really having that sense of buy-in from the students. I think if the students are the focal point and our parents are entrusting their children with, you know, in these particular learning environments and this type of social climate we're in right now today in our state and country, I think as much as to Justice's point, there can be a sense of shared purpose, shared values. That's very, very important, you know. So those are ideals, I think, in my mind, in terms of setting up the SRO for success, is to be integrated with all of the other programs and resources. Because I'll give you an example, one of my staffers went an entire year before SRO even spoke to them. An entire year in the building. Before they even spoke to them. That was an adult who was there to serve and support kids in SRO. Having seen this person for an entire year, never could get a conversation going. So there's opportunity for that gap to close, that's why I mean by integration.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, and we got the link, so thank you, Justice.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Donna.
Susan, I see that you have a question in the chat.
I was opening up the link, thank you for that. So my question, I actually have a couple. One is, and you may not know the answer to this, so do you see any schools right now that are modeling at least close to a relationship with SROs and students that is positive that we could be looking at in our own district? So that's my number one question.
Well, for myself, you know, again, it's based upon the SRO and how they engage with the students. And I have experience in hearing from our students and staff that there's been SROs to where that level of connection was lacking. Right? And then they went on personal leave vacation and whoever replaced them were engaging with the students. They were in lunch line to students, interfacing, yet been watched, well, been observing, but yet engaging and humanizing while they were there with the students. And that we found to be a best practice because students save, supported and a connection. Right? If we can take that type of two-week substitute of SRO and clone that and expand that, that's our recipe.
So to kind of have the SROs there, but also then have the administrative staff help in that, you know, in that relationship building?
Well, I think the building principle is the leader of that space. So I think it's their vision and how they're supported by the district, which I know the support is certainly there, you know, to make sure that clear vision is established and there's buy-in, there's alignment, there's a sheer understanding of what the role is going to be for SRO. That comes from the administration, and I think because we, if we can understand that and they buy into the overall school culture, it makes more sense for a win-win for everybody.
Right, okay, so I appreciate that, thank you very much. And the other question I have, again, I don't know if there's an answer to it, but it's like working towards that. So, understanding that having, you know, SROs that have weapons and knowing, you know, and maybe in the school that's not necessarily positive for a certain demographic, but knowing that they also go out into the community and may need those, you know, for whatever else they go out and need to do. Working on a, working on some way of collaborating with, you know, Washington County Police and Beaverton Police and Hillsborough Police so that possibly we can have some kind of compromise there so that when they're in schools, there may be a way, I'm just saying that, you know, to not have the weapons so apparent if they need to have them. But, you know, so they're not, it's not so intimidating.
Well, I think we're gonna, go ahead, I'm sorry, someone.
No, Mark, go for it, because I was gonna refer to something you said earlier, so you're probably gonna do it yourself.
Maybe not, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, Susan, what you're speaking to is something that, and I can say, I'm gonna go back in my own experience in the classroom, that that's something that really just visually provides the immediate barrier to the relationship. Mark mentioned earlier the idea of our SROs and law enforcement partners presenting in school in a militarized fashion, and that's the term that oftentimes students would use. And, you know, I've witnessed in a classroom when a school resource officer comes to the room and you just see certain students tense up, and that's really uncomfortable as a teacher to see that. I don't like seeing kids just traumatized by that view. It's also uncomfortable because I know that's not the intent of the person coming in at all times. So I think if there is, if there is going to be a relationship or there to be a compromise in that regard, and we understand the need for law enforcement officers to be at the ready for jobs outside the school, but I think, you know, when we're talking about the greatest good for the greatest number, if we, you know, if we have, I'm just gonna name it, kids can't learn when they're scared, right? And so if they're scared for any reason because of how somebody looks, that's something we need to address.
I was also gonna say that, you know, people do have concealed weapons. You don't necessarily know when people are packing. So there are other things that police officers can do to camouflage what they're wearing. It doesn't have to be really out there, but it could be where they have access to it. So I just want to make that point.
Mark, let me, I kind of cut you off, so go for it.
Well, I agree what you shared, Pat, also, Donna, as well, that was on my mind. I think a lot of the common ground, Susan, or the compromise you're looking for, I think, will be realized through training. I think the more our law enforcement are trained in implicit bias and form-informed practice, it will lend itself to being more empathetic and more sensitive to the perceptions based on how they show up in their gear and how they engage in the students. Because if you talk about the rapid, I mean, I believe Beaverton is the most diverse city in the state of Oregon. So we look at this rapid, persistent demographic shift and how Beaverton's become more diverse, right? That diversity comes with experiences, right? That did not have the pass card of privilege. So they were exposed to all types of social dynamics, right, that caused trauma, right? So when you're talking about folks coming into a particular city that perhaps didn't have these issues they had to address, and now they're coming to spaces where they're seeing that type of presentation, there may be some triggers. And the way you dismiss the triggers is to build authentic, real relationships. And then I don't see so much the gun, I see the face. And that person I trust, but to Donna's point, you know, we all have probably done some travel, didn't know we were sitting by somebody from the FBI.
Well, I was gonna comment, Mark, and I appreciate those comments, that I don't think it's just, you know, coming from, again, be as, I can speak, I swear, it's been a long day. The Beaverton Police Department and the Washington County Sheriff's, it's also our responsibility as a school district to, you know, say, here's what we'd like to see in our schools. Here's what helps our kids feel safe. So I think, you know, part of it is, and it's working on collaborating, because I really do feel that everybody is looking out for the best for our students and safety. You know, I have a concern about our students that.
You know, going back to the feedback we got from Eco Northwest, there was, I think, 15% of the respondents just to that survey who actually said that they don't believe that SROs should be in schools. And that's just reflective of the folks who did the survey, and I know that we've heard tonight and we saw it as well in some of the public comment online, that there were folks who didn't respond. And so just again, since this is the segment for the Community Voice, I think it's important to acknowledge that, that there are folks who really see that as an option. Also, Susan, you mentioned one thing that we haven't really talked about, different from the idea of of crime in schools and the role of that. We have a number of students, you know, as public educators, it's our job to take anybody who comes to us for an education. And oftentimes, as we know, that might be students who don't have documentation. And so when we live in a heightened climate of fear around law enforcement and whether or not that represents immigration, et cetera, that's something I think that we need to listen to as well. And it's likely that we didn't hear those voices on our survey because of the fear surrounding that. So just again, acknowledging that those views are out there. And I want to go back to the notion that as public servants, both us in education and our partners in law enforcement, you know, all of us are seeking to serve the best way possible. That's the intent. I think the onus is on us to prove that our impact is matching that intent. I'm looking, David, thank you for the notice that Jessica had to go deal with life outside the board meeting. I'm not seeing other questions in there.
If I could, Pat, I did have something to add to that particular question. I think, though, there's something to think about within the protocols that a police officer has to do that we have to go, well, you know, they have to have this with them, they have to have that with them. Like, if we're not talking about that structurally by placing that person inside of a school, we're missing a bigger framing thing that we need to talk about, which is, you know, around public safety in the broad scope. What is the integration between that and schools? And then if we know this particular constraint is very important for the larger safety model, then maybe we need to think about how, you know, if an officer, and I want to say this because in my experience globally, some of, now, I don't know many of SRO officers in the district outside of the one who helped my son once take a police report. So I have very limited anecdotal information that shouldn't be, you know, used as a distributive interpreter of practice. But often the training modality around how to engage with youth and youth development and those things are very good things. And that's who, when there is a legal matter with a kid, you want to come to the school to talk, right? Or to do the pickup or whatever have you. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to just be there, right? And I really feel that it's important that we look at that question, that you got, you have this material and these tools and sprays and straps and clicks and all, you know, zip ties and all this other equipment with you at all times. Maybe there's, you know, there's a different road to think about how we structure this, or at least to ask the question, can we get there? And also, I just want to make sure that, you know, just this young person that's in the building, that Beatrice, if you had anything else to add that we don't miss you, so.
Thank you, Justice.
Thank you for being here, Beatrice.
I just wanted, oh, go ahead, Beatrice.
Okay, I'd just like to really highlight Mark's point and Justice's that as students, the presence of a school resource officer in full uniform with a gun is, again, pretty scary to many students and students of color. And the relationship that everyone is talking about needs to be included, but also we need to look at our counselors, our advisors, our teachers, our mentors, and they all play a key role in building those relationships, the same relationship that we say the SROs can form. So I think it's really important to remember the roles that our teachers and counselors play in this relationship and mentor status.
Thank you, Beatrice. Becky, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, I just, I want to thank, I was gonna ask just real quickly during this time of COVID and obviously, I wish I could have said to Jessica, I mean, obviously, we need to gather more accurate data to reflect all of our students and find a way to do that. We can't expect people to come to us, we need to go to them. And so I was going to ask Justice, Beatrice, Mark, and especially Jessica, how might you suggest in next steps how we get to people in this atmosphere? I would have loved to have held five community sessions, going to the groups that meet and having us listen, going to them and listen to their input. Instead, we're having to rely on things like pushing out surveys. And Jessica brought up some very good points, whether it be the proper language or, same thing with students, she folks are so busy. What is the best way for us to come to get that proper data and information that we need to move the next, in the next step of the process?
Thank you for your question, Becky. What comes to mind within REAP's work is that we have twice a month what is called the Next Wave, the leader talk show. And we, it's led by students, and it's topics of discussion that are of interest to them. Just a few weeks ago, we had both Senator Merkley and Ron Wyden on, talk about mental health, education, workforce readiness. And we have those twice a month on Wednesdays. That can be a platform because of students on there facilitating the whole talk show, asking questions. That can be a platform because of students on there facilitating the whole talk show, asking questions, Q and A, to help develop their voice. And we invite the community into that particular virtual space. That's one aspect. We have other events we do virtually with family nights where you all can be guests and be a part of the agenda. And I say that because of the dynamic of COVID and the virtual work we're all doing with students. But that is an ongoing virtual platform that no you all can easily be inserted into to listen and ask some questions and get some meaningful feedback. Like I mentioned earlier in my open remarks, you know, we were on a call with the police chief earlier today with our staff, which was the first iteration of a dialogue around public safety, law enforcement in the city of Beaverton, SROs came up. And our next iteration would be bringing in the students in that space as well. We'll keep building, 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 building. So that's my perspective, is to leverage your community partners and see what they're doing and connecting with families and be invited to be guests in that space and be part of the agenda and let it be organic, have those conversations. That's my initial thought toward that.
Thank you.
Becky, I'll add to that, too. I just want to point out that I think, one of the things that I think we could be better, we could get better at as a system is paying attention to the feedback that we have been offered. I think we have heard folks talking about the impact of the relationship with law enforcement and SROs. But a lot of times, we, those, that feedback is considered maybe fringe or or not aligned with the intent, and so we don't listen to it as much. So I want to challenge us as a system to really dig into that feedback, lean into it, and ask more about it. I think also, as was pointed out, you know, we know, we know with a certain degree of confidence which groups were not represented in that summarized feedback, right? So we can kind of, what I call, listen to the silence and we can go and solicit the voices. But I 100% agree with you, and I appreciate hearing you say that, that we can't, we can't just say we're open to feedback and then take what we get, because that's what's going to get us the same results we've had. We can, we can do what Mark said. We can take the kind of more of an active stance in really soliciting feedback from those who maybe have not offered it in the past because they haven't felt safe to. And so, Justice, it looked like you were going to come in. I didn't mean to talk in front of you.
Oh, no, it's fine. I mean, I would add to what was stated is, I think definitely, especially in this very specific conversation, is reaching out to the community organizations and those who have relationships with the, with those who are having the most disparate impact and having the most disparate outcomes that, you know, me and our Latinx community, which I'm not the person at all to speak for, but I have relationships, working relationships with some organizations that I know do work in the district and in the county. And, you know, whomever, I think on this very particular issue, reaching out not just with questions that are very broad, but asking questions that are very specific to the things that we already know, that you've already is as bad as, we already know folks have an issue with. And then I think the internal, whatever the internal dialogue that you're having around, you know, what is the biggest fear of change in this situation, right? We know that SRO, at least my understanding, the SRO program is about a 20, 23-year-old program. So anything that's 22, 23 years old, 25 years old, needs to be updated. Whatever it is, you know, whether that's our, that's our role, whether it's reading curriculum, whether it's, you know, math curriculum, it needs to be assessed and like, does this meet what's happening today, right? Does the intent of this match what actually our young people need today? And also what other ideas were baked into this previous policy decision that were reflective of, you know, you know, quite frankly, you know, racist, homophobic, genderphobic, you know, religious fears, all those things that are, that bubble out of our experience, you know, as our country continues to change and grow. And if you're not willing to go into that space, then we're going to probably have a disappointing and unsatisfying outcome, you know, quite frankly. And that's for everybody, meaning we're not giving anything and everyone involved is going to be in a bad place. And hopefully Beatrice has something she can get the last word.
I completely agree with Mark that there needs to be much more student input. I'm trying to remember back to July, but I don't believe as a, to my school email that I was reached out to. I think only my parents got an email saying to do the survey. So I think it's really important the next time around to solicit student input, because these are the people directly being impacted by your choices and by the presence of SROs. So we definitely need, definitely next time need to have a say in this decision.
Well, there is no next time. It's still the decision. So we just need to continue to do the work that is needed into this going forward. So it's not the next decision, it's this decision, Beatrice. So we really appreciate student voice. So thank you all, community members, for speaking your truth with us and feeling comfortable to join us and spending your evening with us. Again, this is a process and we will continue with the process and we really value community input and it's something that we have to keep building upon and doing better. So thank you so much. Thank you, board members. I know it's past the time that we said that we were going to meet tonight, so I appreciate you being with us after a very full day. But I think this was a great medium step. We still have many steps to go and I will be reaching out to you individually of what kind of things you want to see happen next and do better. And there are things we can build upon and do better because we did not do everything correctly this time around. So we have to continue to learn as we go and take the feedback that you've given us and build upon that. So I'll appreciate that. Appreciate board members. We'll see you at our next business board meeting at the end of the month. And I am thankful to all of you and I hope everyone has a very nice Thanksgiving holiday. So stay safe, everybody.
Thank you all. Be safe. Peace.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.